Good evening and welcome to the September 2nd, 2025, Congress Council City Connersville. All rise to the Pledge of Allegiance, presented by Councilor Bill Gray.
Chairman Collins.
I'm Speaker Mills-Gon.
Pledge of Allegiance, David Collins, of the United States.
I'm Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd like to remain standing for the vacation, Mr. Williams.
I'm, again, Don Miller, representing the Fayette County Mills-Gon Association. It is an honor to come and pray with you folks tonight. Before I pray, I want to read something. I do a devotion on Facebook and AOL each and every day, and I get a lot of people who like that, and this was yesterday, so it'll have reference to my prayer, and my prayer will have reference to it. Here's a Labor Day thought from Max Lucado. It's entitled "God Energizes Our Efforts." Colossians 1:28-29 says, "He is the one we proclaim, admonishing and teaching everyone with all wisdom, so that we may present everyone fully mature in Christ. To this end, I strenuously labor with all the energy Christ so powerfully works in me." Look at Paul's aim, to present everyone perfect in Christ. Paul dreamed of the day each person would be safe in Christ. What was his method? Counseling and teaching others. What tools did he use? Verbs, nouns, sentences, lessons. The same equipment that you and I have. Was it easier then than now? I don't think so. Paul called it work. "To this end I labor," he wrote. Labor means work. Work means home business, people talk, classrooms repaired. How did he do it? What was his source of strength? Paul worked with all the powerful energy that God gave him. As Paul worked, so did God. And as you work, so does the Father. Happy Labor's Day in the Lord. Here's the prayer. Father, I pray tonight for this council of local elected officials who possess the same energy and strength that the Apostle Paul had in order to make good decisions as they strive to lead the city of Connersville down a successful direction. Father, may they indeed find wisdom in their choices because there are so many tough alternatives that they have to face. Father, give them Jeffrey, Sharon, Tommy, Chad, Rosemary, Diana, Brian, and Javen the skill that they desire to serve others. Father, I'm thankful for John Connor and the others who forged the way here so many years ago. May we honor his statue as we move along and progress as a community. Father, bless Mayor Frank as he leads Connersville. Bless those who we have named tonight. May they be united in their efforts. Bless all those who work for the city. Encourage them to do the best that they can as they labor and love. Father, I'm also thankful for organizations and schools and churches who strive to care for the community. Bless them all in their efforts, and may they truly be successful. And Father, we especially pray for the October Day of Sharing that's coming up. Bless all those who participate, and we pray for a fine day. Father, I'm also so thankful that your Son, the Lord Jesus Christ, who gave all He had on the cross, so that all who believe in Him could have the opportunity of both abundant life and eternal life. Father, it is such a blessed assurance that we have, and it is for each one of us. Also thankful, Father, for the Holy Spirit, who guides us each and every day. He encourages us, He directs us along the path of life in the Lord Jesus Christ. In His name I do pray tonight. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we will begin with roll call, Rosemary.
Councilwoman McQueen, present. Councilwoman Barrett. Councilwoman Williams, Jr.
Present.
Councilwoman Phillips, present. Councilwoman Robb.
Present.
Councilwoman Gray. Councilwoman Collins.
Present.
Okay, everyone has their minutes for the August 18th reading of the meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those? Now entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion second. On favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, sign the sign. Motion carried. Where do we get started? Mr. Collins, I didn't apologize, I even told you you were going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. Listen, listen, Mr. Gray, so I owe you an apology. Sorry about the confusion. Can't believe I did that. Mind's in a different direction. I'm going to change the order a little bit today. We're going to start with Trish Atkins from the Whitewater Valley Regional Transit. Come on up.
This is my first time here. Thank you for letting me come. I wanted to kind of give you an update on what kind of transportation we are providing for your community. We took over in January 1 and started providing a little bit more transportation. Fayette County Senior Center did continue to do some, and they, I think they were done like July 1st, June or July 1st. So if you kind of look at your numbers, it kind of shows you, I broke it down a little bit different. I have about five vehicles a day here from the hours of about 5:30 to 6:00. Looks like the majority of our transportation for your community is in medical. We do a lot of dialysis. We take people to Kroger, we take people to Walmart, wherever they need to go, several to work. That continues to grow for us. We didn't have near the ridership that what we have now. The next page kind of shows you what the economic impact is for your community. 2024, that shows your numbers were much lower than obviously what they are now. If you look on the back, your 2025 current for Fayette County is a bottom three. So I think we provide a pretty good service. We're getting ready to hit the beat to do a little bit more marketing, see if we can gather some more. But I feel like we're trying, we're out there, we're trying to get it, get it going. Any questions for me?
Are you having any particular problems or anything?
My biggest restraint right now is we have three 2023 vehicles that are on safety recall, so we had to park those. So in the beginning, we had a whole bunch of vehicles and not enough drivers, so now we have a whole bunch of drivers and not enough vehicles. So we're adapting a little bit, had some attrition, so hopefully those 2023 vehicles, they should be released in September, we're hoping. But that was a pretty big impact on our fleet.
Any other questions?
I did hear from one of your riders, and she was very impressed. She said that she showed up on time.
Thank you. We appreciate that. We've had some learning curves. Fayette County was very good at demand response same day. We have had to work up to that constraints in the schedule, trying to cover Wayne County as well as Union, and then cover Fayette as well. So I appreciate that. We are trying, trying to train a little bit, give us a little bit more nervous than, hey, I'd like to go to Walmart in an hour. So, but they are, I like that we're all working together and getting there. But thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Well, thank you for the service you provide.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I'm going to move on to item D, and then we'll go back to item A, which we have in stone. So we have item C, we have pending orders 3997, ordinance 7057, salary ordinance, Rosemary.
This is amending the current salary ordinance. We have different levels of mechanics at the garage, and so this gives us a different, gives us a salary range, so they can be paid per their current qualifications.
Any questions from council? If not, entertain a motion to approve pending orders 3997, ordinance 7057, I'm first reading.
Second.
Have a motion second. On favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Have a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion second. On favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Have a motion for third and final reading.
Second.
Have a motion second. On favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on to item D, we have to hold a public hearing on this. It's pending orders 3998, which is ordinance 7058. Penning ordinance, Rosemary, the ring goes first.
Pending ordinance 3998 is requesting additional appropriation for the fire pension fund, increasing the retired fireman appropriation by 36,000, increasing the dependence to the disease by 13,000, increasing the police pension fund for the retired officers by 35,000, and this is also increasing the edit fund appropriation for EDG to 75,000.
Just for clarification, the edit fund comes out of special edit tax we received from the county. We always made the park pool payment with, now pool payment is not there, we have to use it for economic development purposes, and then tend to use it for EDG with those dollars. So that's where we're moving those dollars to EDG. Anything, entertain, I'll open up the public hearing first. Anyone from the public have anything to say on the three ordinances? No? Okay, we will close the hearing. Entertaining questions from council. No questions, comments? If not, entertain approving pending ordinance 3998, which is ordinance 7058, I'm first reading.
Second.
Have a motion second. On favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Have a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion.
Second. Have a motion second. On favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. You have a motion for third and final reading.
Motion.
Have a motion second. On favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Up next, we have Adam Stone with Stone Municipal. He's going to be talking a little bit about the budget and the processes. Adam, are you there?
Can you hear?
You're real choppy, Adam.
Can you hear me?
Yes. We can.
Okay, let me try to move here. Is this any better?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, hey, everyone. This is Adam. I apologize, I'm just on my phone, my reception is not, not ideal. I wanted to provide a quick update. In your packets, you should have the initial draft budgets for 2026. This is, we'll be in person with all the department heads to walk through all the requests. So you have the fund level summaries, the department requests, and the line item requests as well. We've worked closely with the departments, the mayor's office, and court treasurer to calculate the initial estimates, both for salaries, benefits, department requests, as well as the revenues for 2026. As maybe you know, due property tax reforms create a lot of revenue challenges. That's reflective in the fund financials. There are four funds that are on our watch list this year. Motor vehicle highway, parks, table, TCU, and then lastly, the aviation. We'll want to work closely with council and departments. The rest of this falls to make sure we prioritize where we allocate those revenues. General fund is currently looking good, has a surplus. It can, that surplus can be used to either build up reserves or be allocated to some of those other funds that, that are on the watch list. We'll want to work closely with council for, we're going to be, okay. So tonight, we're here, open the invitation. If anyone has any questions, wants to talk with us about any of the estimates, I'm totally available to answer any questions with respect to that. Otherwise, we'll continue to work with staff and make the preparations to have the full presentation to you all at your October 6 meeting.
So you're cutting out again a little bit, Adam, so I'll kind of talk a little bit, if that's okay. I don't know if you can hear me or not. Well, I wanted Adam here to be able to answer questions because the budget you have before you is not balanced. We're about a half million dollars off. We have literally removed everything. This includes zero raises for anyone. So we're a half million dollars short, and there's been no cost of living adjustments to that. I did ask all the department heads to be there, be here tonight, so if you have questions, you can ask them. Because what we, to be honest, we didn't realize what the full effects of SB 1 was. No one did. The reason your packets came out on Friday and not Thursday, because I did not have all the information, we were still trying to figure it out, and then my days just got full. And so I got as quick as I could. Some of the numbers have changed just a little bit, but not enough to really show much of a difference. We're still around a half million dollars underfunded right now. In that case, again, that is with no cost of living increase whatsoever at this point. So I just wanted to get you involved on this because we're about to make some critical decisions going forward, and the department heads can answer operations questions better than I can. And I'm probably going to do things a little bit differently. Adam and I talked about this, and I was watching a lot of the state proceedings and how they do their hearings and stuff, even though IC code kind of dictates ours, gives us a little bit of flexibility. I'm really considering just pondering an amendment, so if you don't like something in the budget, you can offer an amendment to that amendment, and council can vote on that amendment, and if council likes that amendment, it gets approved, and that's what we'll move forward with on the budget. If not, then it doesn't get approved and move forward. But that gives you an option to look at every single one. Because you might have a question on something you may not completely understand, or why is it there? I tried to give you an example of an MVH. It's 215,000 in the negative right now. There's not much wiggle room in MVH because the state dictates how much money we spend on asphalt. And that was my first question to Adam, I was like, okay, well, then we won't spend 380,000 on asphalt, we can take it out of there and make it balanced. Do that. That is at the bare minimum. I cannot move those money. So the only money to move around is ice melt and overtime, or shop equipment, which is maintenance armor equipment. That's that fund, so it's going to be very tricky moving forward. And the MVH does have some, a fund built up because we used our money from ARPA to purchase equipment and everything, so we let that MVH fund build up. So technically, there is money in that fund to offset that. I'm using that as illustration because this fund is completely separate. A lot of times, we think we just get a pot of money, we can move wherever we want. Some things we can, some things we cannot. And that is one of them, it's underfunded, and we cannot move stuff around. So I just wanted, now's your time to ask questions, and if you've got any question you want to ask, department heads here, they'll be here through all those meetings, and where they can answer questions operation-wise. But we've got to make some serious cuts here, and obviously, it's going to impact services, no questions about it. So Adam, can you hear us now?
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
Okay. Did you hear everything I just said?
Yes.
Okay. I think that was a yes.
Yeah.
Questions, comments from council? Because this is going to be tricky working through, very tricky. I did send you some information on things, some ideas that I have. Obviously, those are not set in stone, we really, some of those things is going to take a lot of work to do, so I know, I always just, I always try to give options. Doesn't mean those are only three options or four options, wherever it sends you, but we got to look at all options.
Not really a question, but maybe something to follow up on for later for the department heads. When it says department requests, is there a way to get those, and again, department requests, anything above or other than operations? What it takes to operate and that kind of thing? Anything above that, special projects, special things going on, anticipation of things that you might have built in? Can those be listed and then sent to council? If you have any?
Any changes made is off to side. Adam put notes on there on any requests they had. I'll be honest, there, we took a lot of the requests they had, and we took them out because they do not fit, and we cannot afford them. So I, he details, there's a detail on each side. Did you put all the details in there, Adam, again, on this PDF you sent?
Yeah, there's a line. And should have all the notes be kept open, and if there's any additional notes you need, just let us know. There's a specific department you want to see more on, or.
No longer any more? Just in the notes?
You have page?
Yeah, I'm looking here.
Page 10. Clear on the right-hand side, there's notes.
Right, it says notes.
Is it talking about you?
Yes.
If there's no notes, then nothing changed on it.
Right. But they're not very specific, and I'm just wondering, there may be things in there that perhaps we do want.
Here's one that's specific.
Again, I'm just talking generally.
Yeah, really, but the only increase in budget you see are like electricity, gas, stuff we have no choice. PERF increase, I'll give you an example. Our PERF increase, general fire and police was 150,000, I believe, and we collected 280,000 in revenue, so that is 40% of a revenue increase on general fund. I'm not, I'm property taxes, sorry. So that, everything in here, the only increases you see are just stuff that we really did not have much choice on. I can't control the electric and the gas. I can't control some of our insurance increases. Some stuff we didn't do based on trend. We don't, like, you look at landfill, it says trend, there's an increase of trend, that's based on our cost to do business, Walmart trending at. So some of that stuff we do by trend, but really, any special project, we really took everything out.
So anything not addressed, you could put in there. We'll do that right.
Other than operational, moderately increased, ended up being fired here because of expenses.
And if there's not, then there's not, but, you know. But really, what is not what it is, you can't.
Well, it's better if you're doing it than if we're doing it unconscious as first. Yeah, I'm looking through it now, I don't, I don't see anything outside of.
There's a, there's one here that's specifically lined out. I don't see any that's not. I see what you're saying as far as the notes.
Oh, yeah, see, if it's got a line, it means we took it out. I want you to be able to see what they request and what we took out. I see what you're saying now, I apologize. So strictly, we take, we took it out.
Right.
Sorry, I was not following.
That's okay. I wasn't being specific.
And now's the time to ask some thoughts, some questions, and comments. I mean, because we've got to start moving forward in a direction. I'll be honest, I don't have a clear picture of what that direction looks like. So that's why I'm kind of doing a little process here. We've got, bad thing is, we got our, finally got our income, and we don't have a whole lot of time to put the budget together, which is why we started really getting our cost, and then we knew we could back out of it, or not back out of it, but where our costs and things, and we can back it down to where our income is. Our income just came in significantly less than what we anticipated. We really thought in '26 we'd be, I don't want to say good, but we could survive it. And then '27, '28, we know it's going to get significantly worse. '26 is much worse than we anticipated, obviously by a half million dollars. That is not a good position to be in. That's with no raises for anybody.
What's our timetable, Chen?
Adam, we're going to have it October, what's our public hearing, in October, Adam?
October 6.
I think it is.
October 6 is the public hearing, so we have until basically now and then to sort of work through everything, make sure everybody has all their questions answered, at least up to that, and then adoption will be late, late October. The budgets statewide have to be adopted by early November. I think it's like November 2nd or November 3rd, off the top of my head, or they revert back to prior, prior adoption. So we wanted to make sure council had the drafts as soon as possible in preparation of that public hearing, and certainly will continue working it all the way to adoption.
I do want to correct one thing. I said there's no cost of living raise at raises. Now, we did do, like with all the unions, we had a four-year increase over 12%. The police have one more year of that four-year, that 12% we agreed to four years ago. I wasn't going to back that out. So they are going to get that little, what is it, percent?
Two.
Two percent. The police will be getting that, that was part of the 12% we gave everyone else, and that was part of the contract. So that is the only raise you'll see in this, at this point, in the contract, or in the increases. So I do want to correct that. Any questions, Collins? I mean, there's a, there's a lot there, and a big budget, a lot to come through. Easy to say, Rosemary's been working her tail off on putting this together. Thank you for your work.
Obviously.
She works tirelessly on this. That's just a lot of information to put in, a lot of calculations. So one of the things, one of the increases you'll see would be longevity, that's not controllable. There's a lot of contractual obligations we have to fill on this, so that's, that's one. Longevity, police pay, those are the, PERF contributions.
And French.
Yeah, and the French. Those are really non-controllable expenses.
I mean, you've now, you've, I'm sure the department heads have done what they can, but if you've done everything you can, Rosemary's done what she can, I'm not sure what else there's, there is to do except to look at more.
Cuts.
Bigger, more drastic cuts.
Now, there's two things. You can look at drastic cuts, or you can look at the options I gave you in the letter. I'm not ready to talk about those because there's going to be some negotiations, and I'm not looking at your strategy. But there are some things that we don't take advantage of, that we can take advantage of, that we just have in the past because we didn't want to run pay-to-pay ball, but the state's going to force our hands. If we want to be able to still provide services, we have to make changes. Like in my office, I need help bad, I can't get it. So I'm looking at AI, I'm looking at all kinds of options to really help solve some of my problems, because I physically can't get it all done, so.
You think between now and our next meeting, you'll have more updates on those?
On AI?
No, on further discussions.
This is beginning step one, so there's, I hate to say it, but some of the options I gave you will not take place before a budget has to be approved. So if we're going to make decisions, we might have, we have to talk about several things before we even.
I mean, deadlines on those discussions need to be, we need to know if they're not going to be or not, that way.
Most of those discussions will happen after the budget gets passed, because it's just timeline, we can't physically do them all.
Right.
So your utility rate increase, I mean, that's timelines, we got, we got follow statutory timelines, that's not going to happen. There's a piece of the utility we can use that's called pilot, the payment of taxes. We've never taken advantage of it, most communities take full advantage of it, but I always felt like we were running pay-to-pay ball, now we don't have a choice for providing services. One good hand is the other communities have already done that, now they don't have that option. So we have that option. So there's different things we can do. That in itself will not fix our problem, though. So that's why there's several things we have to look at.
Several pieces, but.
There's several pieces, and it's going to take a lot of work to get there.
Council needs all the pieces to at least make the best informed decision they can as far as.
Absolutely.
If this is an option or not, or if it's not going to.
That's why I gave you a.
Come to a conclusion before October 6.
Yeah, nothing will be done on that before October 6. And the CC, the CC, what am I trying to say, CCD?
Q cap development.
Yeah, that really won't impact, it'd be an impact, but when we didn't reestablish, those are funds we did get, we're going to use those for sunwalk improvements, something like that, but it can free up money here, and then we can do something else with those dollars. So there, that's why I threw that out there. It may not be a significant amount, but it's, it's a pretty good amount, it'll help. I just want to throw out options. I mean, I don't may not have all the options, that's why I want everyone looking at this thinking, hey, what about this, what about this? I love every possible way we can do that, so I just want to get this in your hands now, just because we kind of hit a wall, and I don't have a direction at this point. I do have a direction, but I don't know what kind of direction you guys want to take on this as well. It's a lot. It's not been easy. And I'm sure you're hearing from people like, you know, the state's looking to change SB 1. They might be, they're not communicating that with me. I can't count on that, so I have to live with what we have now. It will be drastic, reduce, reduce services to the community, that's what everyone needs to understand. Could be. Maybe not next year, but '27, '28 is still coming, and it's not going to be pretty. I personally asked for state legislator for an extension on our budgets. I didn't get anywhere with that.
I just know what I'm thinking about it in the next couple of weeks and seeing if anything comes of it, just prioritizing what we need first, and prioritizing first responders that kind of thing first. Not in the aspect of cuts, but as last resort.
I, I don't disagree. I, I mean, we, I pulled every department head in today, and had very serious conversations with every one of them. And we've got to look at two things here, and I'm not saying this is a defense of anyone things here. And I'm saying this in defense of anyone or anything, because I'm agreeing with you on that. We've got to protect our first responders. At the same time, if we don't, if we don't fund any mechanism for growth, we're going to be in the same position where we're going to tick off, it's not as, everything just kept getting kicked down the road. We had zero plan for growth. If your community's not growing, it naturally going to decline anyway. We hit, we hit, Chief Jones, you've been here a long time, and you've seen the decline. And with no growth, what happened? It kept getting worse. It never got better. We finally hit a path for growth. We've been growing, we've had record growth, and the state cuts our fees. That's exactly what happened. So if we're, if we're just going to cut our way out of it, I'm fine with that. We also don't want to cut too many growth options we have, because if you don't grow, it's just going to keep going in the wrong direction. Just like a business. If you never invest in growth in your business, you just cut your way out of it, you'll be out of business for too long. And I don't want to be in that position. So we, I'm just trying to be mindful. That's why I say everything we cut, that's what the department heads here are saying. If we need to cut this, what does that look like? Because it's easy to say, well, I'm just going to cut E G position. But what does that look like? What ramifications that? If you want to cut any position, there's going to be services that go away with that, and that's what you've got to look at. So, yeah, I understand prioritizing public service, absolutely. We also have to make sure we take care of our growth factor, because I don't want to continue to just go backwards. So it's going to be some tough decisions at the end of the day. It really is. Anybody?
Can we have the department heads go back and take another look at it? Take another look at it? And then maybe we need, as, as the council committee, break down, will we actually take it line by line item and go down through it? Is that a possibility?
You're more than welcome to do as much as you want.
I know, but I'm, as far as having several people, not just one person looking at it or.
No, you can, and the department heads can go with you line by line. Adam's probably the best to go line by line.
Right. I know Adam's gone, if Adam's gone through it, I'm, you know, whatever I come up with is not.
Even Rosemary, she didn't probably do stuff there, I can't. Because she knows, there's a lot of stuff she knows where it goes, where it doesn't go, where it comes out of the general fund, it doesn't get paid out of general fund. You can't do this because of general fund, or you can't do this. So there's, there's a lot of things there. So I would encourage you to sit down with Rosemary, or Adam, and the departments, I don't really care. But Rosemary and Adam can give you the best answer as far as, because they understand their budgets. They always understand the income, where it can and can't go. Where Rosemary would have all of it. But you're more than welcome to sit down with any one of them.
Adam, the other question I got, is Adam, as far as this, we're just talking this, this year right now is coming up for this, like we said, five hundred thousand, whatever the number is. What's it look like the next two years? Do we have to go, I mean, do we even have an idea?
Yeah. Can, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's really going to be sustained each year. I mean, this thing builds through two thousand thirty-one. You know, so the, the way SB one works is that really through two thousand twenty-seven, you have sort of this initial wave of deductions and the supplemental starting to expand. Two thousand twenty-eight, we have to work through the local income tax measure. That's where communities start to diverge. You know, it's hard to predict. If you, if you have a municipal lit post two thousand twenty-eight, you have a different sort of outlook than if you have a community that doesn't obviously reenact a local income tax. So yes, we have a forecast out through two thousand thirty-one. It's large, where we got a little surprise, I think everybody in the state did, is two thousand twenty-six with the new homestead credit. We fully implemented that in two thousand twenty-six. So a chunk of this is really just a realization of taxpayers in Connersville got a new ten percent credit that never existed before. So it's an immediate dollar for dollar reduction in property tax revenues that we have to sort of eat in addition to, you know, higher pension costs for public safety, higher inflationary costs kind of across the, across the board to provide service. So all of that was, is kind of what we're walking through here. So I, I'm happy to talk with anybody along with anyone else. We're happy to share all the kind of estimates we have, just to make sure that you have all the information you have, you have, you need before you, you know, make an informed decision. And also, you know, we would just encourage you that there's certain funds that, you know, are higher, of higher priority from a financial health perspective. Some funds have real access reserves. They can sort of have, you know, they have their own sort of rent date built into them. Other funds don't have that luxury, or have already spent down that luxury. So that would be another thing that we can talk about, you know, in more detail as, as we go.
Is there a way to, you know, you had talked about mandate, I think it's, uh, N D H, where we have to, have to pay that much, like you talked about earlier. Is there any way to indicate that on here, which ones are actually, which line items are actually made?
Rosemary could do that.
There, we just redid the ordinance late last year, and it's just N D H only. We have to have exactly fifty, fifty percent of that income has to go to the roads and streets. Okay, so that's the only one on here that's ordinance enforced like that by the state, that he was talking about?
You, you have the pension funds that have different things. You have the CCD and CCI, all different.
Right. Yeah, I just meant ones that may not be, I know insurance and pension funds and stuff like that, we can't ignore any. But if there was anything else, okay, so there's none. Okay, that answers my question.
I do, I do apologize. I have to jump. Happy to, happy to talk to anybody one-on-one, mayor. If you just make sure everyone's getting my contact information, and then we'll, we'll keep, keep everybody informed as we keep working through this.
Yeah, I believe everyone already has his contact information, if I'm not mistaken. If you don't, I'll give it to you. Thanks, Adam.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
No, I just want to get this in everyone's hands so you can see the seriousness of what we're dealing with. We honestly did not anticipate this, this year. So now we're going to face it. Now we've got a lot of critical decisions to make.
So basically, are we talking about a high and freeze?
Well, there's a problem with that. It's whether your contracts dictate how many personnel you have.
All right, what about spending freeze? I mean, I know we got to spend, but is it possible that we can, you know, stop spending a lot? And, well, let me give you an example that I think, just right now. We're brass heavy everywhere. Fire department, police department, everywhere brass heavy. What I mean by that is, you got a, a captain, assistant captain, first lieutenant, and we're paying all these guys here, I mean, basically the same money. And I've ran my own business before, and I've always done, say, for example, um, a supervisor here. Instead of paying another assistant supervisor, I would give one of my workers and pay them a little, little something extra, extra, just to have an assistant supervisor. Not an assistant supervisor that's going to make the same money as the supervisor, less, less than five hundred dollars. I'm just saying, we got to start cutting, like you say, we got to start cutting, cutting, cutting. The police officers that takes their vehicles home, that's a lot of gas. I know we need the police officers to drive around in the community to show force. But that's a lot of gas money that the citizens are paying for. You know, why? They got their own vehicles. So why do they have to drive their police cars around Richmond, wherever, shopping with their wives, girlfriend, kids? You know, that's a thing now. We can't continue to do that and pay for it. This is why, you know, I'm not going to say this is why, but that's five hundred thousand in there. We can save a lot of money just by cutting it. And I'm talking about the, uh, you know, the, the fire department as well. I, I don't know how many vehicles they driving around and stuff, but we're driving a lot of vehicles around. A lot of people say, well, could that's chunk change. But we got to start somewhere. We got to start little by little, take, 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 if we're going to get our budget under control. And when I got this message, you know, from the mayor today, I looked at it and looked at it. I said, well, you know, we can take these little things and just keep building and keep building, and eventually we'll get there. Because I don't think we're going to be able to take a major hit and say, hey, let's get rid of the, the fire chief. Let's get rid of the police chief. That's a major hit. And no, can't do stuff like that. So, you know, and I just think about that a lot. With the chief, assistant chief, right there alone, that's ten thousand dollars. That's a lot of money. When you can have a lieutenant can fall into that chief spot for two thousand. So we need to start thinking about this.
I'd like to have the department address on if you'd like.
Going back to the pickup trucks, myself, my assistant chief are the only two that have take-home trucks. We respond to fires off duty from our houses, if you would like us.
No, I understand that. I understand your, I understand your department.
Right. As far as the rest of the structure of the department goes, that's how it's designed. Each officer has specific duties to do, and they are all overwhelmed. That's why I beg for him to get my assistant chief four years ago, because we weren't getting things done. You know, we got the city's ISO rating lowered, because we all worked hard and contributed. But every single person, every single officer on the department has been that way for decades, has specific duties, and they work hard, you know, to achieve those duties. So I feel like if I lost an officer, then we would, we would go downhill.
Oh, I'm not talking, it was, yeah.
Right. Yeah, we all work together. We do a good job. My assistant chief does a great job, and I couldn't, I couldn't, the department wouldn't function, the chief's office wouldn't function right if I didn't have an assistant chief.
But I'm not saying assistant chief with the same pay that you have, four or five hundred dollars less. I'm talking about a lieutenant that can assume that role of assistant chief without having the title in the money. It doesn't work like that.
Assume that role. The lieutenants are on shift twenty-four hours a day. The chief's office works eight to four, and is administrative, and does all the duties of the daily administration. You know, the lieutenants, the captains, the battalion chiefs, they're on shift for twenty-four hours a day. They each have their own duties. You know, you know, no matter what they're doing, whether they're training, whether they're fighting fire, you know, responding on any calls. You know, they all have their own duties. Each station has an officer. If you do away with an officer at a station, you might as well close the station. So, I mean, those are all things I'm going to sit down and talk to you about, but, you know, and give you the right information, and explain to you why the things are that way.
And place that way, yes.
Right. And I get, I, I understand we're in a tough position. You know, trust me, I've sat and talked to the mayor several times, you know, what can we do? But, yeah, as far as that goes, you know, there's a reason that structure is that way. And if I hadn't, if I hadn't gotten assistant chief back when I did, there's no way that I could have gotten the things done that we've gotten done. Yeah, and I'm just being a hundred percent honest.
And we still got a lot more to do, because there's a lot of compliance that we're not meeting yet, especially with the state fire marshal side of things, that, that we just ignored until we got the assistant chief in there. Now we're trying to get on top
We're working really hard trying to make the community safer, and we weren't doing it, you know, in the past, you know, trying to get out and do more inspections. I probably spend thirty percent or forty percent of my time in the fire code, trying to research things nonstop, you know, and that's aside from payroll claims, you know, you know, overseeing everything else. We don't have a secretary. You know, we take care of everything, you know, in the chief's office. And as far as the other officers go, they all do a wonderful job, you know, in their duties. And, yeah, there's, there's, you know, one officer can't, you know, take the spot of another officer, just, just to try to save money. It just won't work that way.
Yeah. Has it ever came to.
And you got a lot of contractual obligations too. So, I mean, it's, we got a contract that defines all that.
Right. Has it ever came to the point that you would have to get out there and put out fires if you're short on workers, which I know you will?
Oh, I, I miss fighting fire, but that's obviously not my duties now. We respond to fires, and we investigate fires, myself and my assistant.
So we're all focused on my title, my title.
Well, we have different duties now.
I know, I understand that, but would you get out there?
Fire.
Would you get out there and fight fires with your brothers? Because you got a duty to, to say, hey, that's not my job to put a hose and burn, just burn house.
I would be more than willing to go out there and help fight fires.
But that's not your job.
We have another job to do. We investigate the fire. Once they put the fire out, overhaul, clean everything up, then it's our turn to go and investigate. They don't go in and investigate. We go and investigate the fires. There's a process for everything we do.
So in other words, you, you wouldn't go in there and assist your brother putting out a fire?
I would go in and assist any of my firefighters. I'd go into a fire at any time. But I am the chief. It's my job to oversee everything.
Yeah, I understand that.
Someone's got to run the scene.
Yeah. Well, he can run the scene and put a hose at the same time. I'm thinking.
That's just not how it works.
Well, I'm just saying, we're talking about cuts. We're talking about cutting. And, and then, that's what I'm saying. It might come, it might come to, it might come to a point.
I would invite you to come to the station.
It might come to a point.
And ride with me, ride with, ride on the truck. Everyone here is invited.
But it might come to a point that you got to get out there with the hose, with your pencil and paper, writing down everything you need to. Because if, if, if what we're talking about now, in, then twenty, twenty-five versus twenty-six and twenty-seven, it's, it's going to be some, it's going to be some cuts somewhere.
Well, I'm, be happy to have those discussions with you.
I appreciate it.
Come to my office, and we'll do some riding, and I'll put you on the truck, and you'll see how everything's laid out and how everything functions.
I appreciate that, Chief Jones.
Okay.
Thank you.
And one other thing, he's making life and death decisions for the guys in the fire. If no one's out there making those decisions, people will get hurt.
Yeah, yeah.
And he's also be liable for his fire guys getting hurt. So someone's got to be outside that fire.
Yeah, I'm not saying I would, I wouldn't go, I'd go in with any of those guys, but that's, I can't do that.
He's been on scene, they pulled him out before because it was getting unsafe. They couldn't see it inside. If he's inside, who's seeing that? So his role, I understand what you're saying, but his role is completely different than what you have a perception of.
Okay.
Because someone's going to make those decisions on the outside. If no one's there, people will get hurt.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
So this, as he's trying to say, it's a different role. If he don't want to, I know Scott, he'll, he'll want to be in that fire all day long. But it's just a different role. He's, he meant, it's in their blood.
Yeah.
Standing outside directing everything is not in their blood. But he knows he has to do that because it protects everyone in there. So him, is he still part of that fire scene? He may not be dragging the hose, but he's got a duty to do that to protect everybody.
I got called at three o'clock the other morning, you know, to a fire. Had to come in, you know, you know, oversee the scene while the guys were fighting fire. You know, I even, after it got calmed down, flew the drone.
Yeah.
You know, then I go in, start investigating, called the state fire investigator, and investigated the fire.
You flew the drone for the hot spots and stuff, right?
Yep, from my truck, from my laptop in my truck. Once the scene calmed down, they were doing overhaul.
And you're involved in all of them?
Yes.
Not just one shift or two?
Yes, any time. We get called, you know, I got called at my house to fly the drone one night for the police department. You know, we get called all hours of the day. You know, so all the more reason, the main reason that my assistant chief and I both have, you know, take-home vehicles, that's because we respond, you know, from the house
You got your own transportation to get down.
And it's not just fires. You know, we respond on all major incidents, you know, from home, when we're needed. You know, I've had major gas leaks. I've had to come into town, you know, recently, you know, in places. So, yeah, there's, there's a structure for everything. And we're more than glad to sit down and explain it to you.
All right. Appreciate that. So.
Anything else, Chief?
Sit down.
That's why I want these guys here. They can explain stuff, the day-to-day.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First off, to address the vehicles, that was a benefit that was given to the officers as a perk. All they have authorization to do, if they live in the county, we're outside of the county, is from work to their home. If they live in the county, they can go to the gym, store, back home. They can't be out joyriding in the car.
Okay, okay.
So when you say it's can save a lot of money, we're, we're not there with that, but.
I'm saying starting at the bottom, and just work your way up.
I understand.
Yeah.
Um, as far as restructuring the department, we have had that conversation with the union on our last contract negotiations. I'm not against that. They're not against it. It just has to work.
For everyone.
For everyone. But those conversations have been there. Um, as far as the difference in pay amongst the.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I was just throwing numbers. I mean, I, I know, but I was just throwing numbers.
You're talking hundreds of dollars, not thousands of dollars.
Yeah.
It's, it's, um, most of the time, it's not even beneficial to supervisors to take those positions because the pay's not worth it. So to ask one of them to do another duty, to throw that on to them that one below them could do, would not be, I, I wouldn't have anybody fill those positions then. So that has been talked about. Um, we, we have looked and looked and looked at the budget. We have, and you've seen our budget, besides fringe, pay, the, the things that we have to have to operate the police department.
Yeah.
We, we have three or four line items with money. It's not a bunch. There's not a whole lot that we can cut. And the ones that do have, uh, we have one for minor equipment And the ones that do have, we have one for minor equipment that last year, or this year, we have twenty thousand in. We have to have that, we have to replace equipment, we have equipment we need to buy every year. Instructions to send officers to school, as you guys all know, we've had a big turnover. We can't keep officers. Every time we send an officer to the academy, it's a thousand dollars, actually a thousand fifty dollars to get them through the academy. So, we, we hardly have enough money in that to take care of that, let alone send officers to a bunch of.
It's a uniform cost.
Uniform cost. We're, we're almost in the negative on that every, every time.
Yeah, I got another question for you. Because are we, are we gonna get back to that point with two officers in a vehicle instead of one? Because you see an incident that occurs in Connersville, you have three, four officers there with four vehicles. So, I, I look at that, it's like, man, that's, that's wasting manpower there. Depending on the situation, though.
The reason that happens, we, we can't double up, we can't go down to two cars on the road. If, a lot of times, we'll, we'll have all four or five officers busy. They'll be on different ends of the town, all over the place. The reason we have three or four officers show up on a call is because we don't know how that call's gonna go.
Right, okay.
Obviously, they're not gonna show up four people to a simple bin check or a simple citizen's assist. But if we have a battery call, we're gonna get everybody there. We don't want any of our guys getting hurt.
Right.
Let alone the, the victim that's being, being hurt and while we're called there. We want that to stop, so we'll, we'll send everybody with tan.
Okay.
So, it's not, it's not that they do that just to sit around and have fun with it. They're doing that to protect each other's backs.
Thank you, I really appreciate that.
And I'm the same way. If any of you guys want to come and sit down, call me, I'd be happy to walk through line by line on the budget, tell you where we're at and why it has to stay there or needs to stay there. I understand it's tough, and we'll, hopefully, we can get it figured out.
All right, I don't disagree. And one thing I will say with the take-home car, because I questioned this early on, I really questioned this hard, was all the departments around us pay significantly more, and they get take-home vehicles. That's one perk that we have. If you take that away, we're already underpaid, mayor, you're gonna lose people, you're gonna lose more than what we have now.
Now, right.
So, yeah, it's kind of, I understand that you wanna save a thousand dollars here or there, but at what expense, you're gonna lose officers. We're already losing them. So, that, that is, that was a perk that was already loaded in there, because I grilled you guys hard around here, and I was like, I don't get this, it doesn't make any sense to me. But they also do respond quicker, while they have to call them in for emergency. They don't have to come, get their car, find, get everything, and then get out there, they can go straight to the scene. So, that is one of, that's one of the reasons, fire and police, not just the chiefs, but we just, but they take their cars home so they can respond quickly.
Okay.
And when they are driving around town, they are deter and crime.
Absolutely. And we've had many of officers, while they're out doing that, stop and assist, stop and help whoever they can. So, it's, it's a benefit.
Yeah.
But again, I'm a phone call away or a visit away. Just come and save and call me.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Nope.
That's good, these are discussions gotta be had. Okay, we can, if there's no more, we'll move on down to, excuse me, old business or resume some of the resolution corrections she wants to make.
I have, you should have a copy of the resolutions, the corrected resolutions. The resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixty-four was actually a transfer of two million nine thousand eight hundred and forty dollars and thirty-one cents on both, uh, resolution sixty-four and sixty-five.
Just transpose a couple hundred.
Just moved it one digit too many times.
Any questions for Rosemary? If I don't entertain a motion for resolutions two zero, two five, oh, six, four, and six, five.
Motion.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second, on favor, second by the same eye. Any opposed, same side? Motion carried. Moving on to miscellaneous business, anyone have any miscellaneous business? I do have one thing I want to add in miscellaneous. I said it in the board of works, and I'll say it again tonight, just 'cause with the chief ball is retired, I want to let everyone know my intentions with this. I don't have any intentions right now. My intentions are, I can't pull anyone off the road if I go that way, because we're already short. I'm not pulling anyone off the road, causing more overtime, and I'm not sure what SB one's gonna look like. So, I'm really being cautious moving forward on the budget, so Chief McCurry is gonna be the, the interim chief until we come up with a plan and when and what that looks like, I honestly can't tell you. I know that, is it January, we have full shifts back, chief?
Negative, we'll, we send in two more to the academy. We'll have three that still needs to go to the academy.
So, it probably won't be till after January, if I'm vacating, it'll be later on in the spring, so it's gonna make it very interesting for Chief McCurry and I to figure this out, especially when he's gone. Someone's gonna be there, be me at this point. I have no police chief, but I am tasked with running that department, so, I don't know, we got a good group of guys, they'll all step up and help out at the same time, because they, they all understand the same predicament we're in, so I don't have any answers for that moving forward on what I'm gonna do with that. Don't believe any rumors you hear, please. I've heard so many rumors, it's unbelievable. What I'm gonna do, it always drives me crazy. There are no directions for me right now, so don't, don't believe anything you hear. I've heard people say, well, they heard it from your mouth. No, you didn't. Did not say that, so that is kind of where I'm standing with that. I just cannot make a decision until we know ramifications of SB one and when we get people back from the academy, so. Any other miscellaneous business? Okay, I'll look for them. If they're from the public, anything they want to say. I thought somebody was from the public.
I thought it was.
Public hearing.
There was somebody, there was somebody.
Was you wanting to say something during the public hearing, I thought?
Yes.
Okay, we're having it right now.
Oh, you want me to go first?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Come on, I'll set your name and address.
Mallory, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to stop and speak up a little bit.
Mallory Sanders.
And your address?
Seven eleven Beach Street, Lot Twenty, here in Connersville. Okay, so as I said, my name is Mallory Sanders, and it's my first time here, so bear with me. I'm a civil rights advocate, and I need to provide public notice to Fayette County, Indiana. This is in accordance with the U S C S rules of civil procedures, as well as Rule seventeen and Rule twenty of the United States Supreme Court. The Constitution of the United States has the over, has the overarching requirements that every state must follow. States cannot enact their own alternative legislation substituted for the guarantees of the Constitution of the United States. That would mean that the state laws are more powerful than the Constitution, which I think we all know that's unlawful. Clause one of Amendment five states, no person shall be held to answer for a capital or otherwise infamous crime unless on the presentment of, or indictment by a grand jury. However, the state of Indiana has enacted its own alternative legislation that permits prosecuting attorneys and police officers to charge by way of information as opposed to indictment. That is unconstitutional, and an enrollment violation is when you pay a public official to break the law. The Constitution has two areas that enforces this. Article one, section ten says, no state shall create any law that shall impair the obligation of contracts. Our police officers, our prosecutors, our judges are all under a contract, a contact, a contract to perform based on the oath or affirmation that they took to support and defend the Constitution, the United States Constitution. Contract parameters are defined within the Constitution of the United States, and when a state enacts an inferior law that directs their agents to disobey the Constitution of the United States, that is violation of Article one, section ten. The Fourteenth Amendment is the other place that you'll find the reinforcement of this issue, and that is where it states that no state shall create or enforce any law that shall abridge the privileges or immunities of United, of the United States citizens. The privileges and immunities of the United States citizens are as minimum, those enumerated within the Bill of Rights, the first ten amendments, I think we can all agree. Unfortunately, the state of Indiana has enacted a law in its inferior constitution that permits public officials such as judges and law enforcement officers and prosecutors whom you all pay to violate the Constitution of the United States. As a result, there is an inordinate, inordinate amount of people currently imprisoned in the state of Indiana, with high numbers coming from our own county illegally and unconstitutionally. Tanae Downing is litigating this issue at the United States Supreme Court. I'm here to notify you that if you continue to pay public officials to break the law, criminal sanctions can come from that. Officials must be made aware that paying people to disobey the law is an enrollment violation. It is illegal, it is unconstitutional, it is a crime. I'm asking you honorable individuals to please take a look at Clause one of Amendment five, confirm what I'm saying to be true, and then direct your public officials to act in lawful, constitutional, in a lawful, constitutional manner, consistent with the obligations that are codified in the Constitution of the United States of America.
Give thirty seconds.
I have a notice that I would like to put on the record. Thank you so much, God bless.
Okay.